Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting. Today is Thursday, April 22, 2021. The time is now 6:32 PM. On the agenda this evening, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. So I have my flag. And since we're still doing, talking about the budget, I think it's appropriate that we go ahead and say that. So if you'll join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. With that, we are going to move into public delegations. Is there any attendee of this webinar that would like to address the Board of Finance this evening? I see that there are two people on the webinar with us. If you would like to address the board, please raise your hand so that I may call on you. Or you can drop us a chat in the chat box. Okay, it does not look like anybody wants to address the board this evening, so we'll move on. We'll close public delegations. And we'll move on to old business, any outstanding information? I don't recall that we are waiting for any additional information. Is that everybody else's recollection? Okay. So if there isn't any other outstanding information to discuss, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5, Budget Deliberations. So last night, or I should say, early, early this morning, we we approved the town budget, which included the general government budget, the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed budget, capital, and debt service. So what we opted to leave for this evening's meeting is a discussion on the CIP plan. So before we talk about the CIP plan, I just want to make note that any, any item in that 2021, 2022 column will, is not, you know, we don't change it at this point because that was part of the budget that we approved last night. But we can have a discussion on the years looking forward. So I don't know if the board wishes to discuss anything on the CIP plan this evening? Or if, yes, Anne Chakel.
Just a question. Are we talking about the long range cap, capital plan? Is that what we're speaking about?
Yes, it's the last tab in the budget book.
Oh.
Yeah, it's the long range capital plan. I have a copy that is dated. Eleven, it looks like. So it's worthwhile noting that the items that are listed in, out in the 10-year plan are really a placeholder. It's so that we don't lose sight of different capital projects that will be needing to probably undertake sometime in the future. Also, it doesn't mean that it's automatically approved as it moves forward each year. Into the current year, it, it still needs to be discussed and approved by the Board of Finance, once that capital item moves forward. So again, we're not approving any capital items in this plan. It is just the 10-year forward-looking plan that we're discussing. So is there any discussion on the plan this evening, or are we prepared to send this to, you know, the, the town for their vote on it? Any questions or concerns? Shall we move on? Everybody's good with it?
I'm still, sorry.
That's okay.
Are you looking at, I'm still confused where you're looking. Are you Department 724?
Uh, no, uh, this would be, it's the very last tab in the budget book, and it's called ZIP. And they're actually eight and a half by 14-inch pages.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's what I thought it was. And then, okay, I got it. All right.
Okay.
Yeah, all set. Thank you.
Again, anything, anything in that 2021, 2022 column has already been decided by the mere fact that we approved a budget last night. And so the financing of those capitals already all rolled up into the, you know, debt service and all the calculations have already been made and approved for that year. Okay, shall we move on? Okay, so, um, Anna had called me today and made me aware of some changes in state revenues. She received this just today after we've already approved the budget. I'm going to call up that screen so she can walk us through the numbers and the possible impact on our budget and, and what it means. And I've asked her maybe to also just discuss possible options of what to do with that. So let me call that up. Town of Eastline projected revenues 2021, 2022. Again, these are state revenue projections that were altered and received today by our Finance Director.
Um, okay, so the information that's up in front of you are, are the revenue accounts that are included in the general fund budget relative to the state grants that we received. So with this, the legislature proposed column represents what Finance and Appropriations is sending to the legislature. So the budget that you looked at last evening included the governor's proposed state revenue. So this is like gone one step further at this point. As I understand it, the state legislature is scheduled to wrap up their work by, by June 9. So the very first line item of revenues is education cost sharing. So when the governor proposed his budget, he put a pause for two years on the phasing out of the education cost, education cost sharing grant, the ECS grant. And so Finance and Appropriations is putting that back in. So what that would mean to Eastline is a $218,651 reduction. Town aid road grant, the Pequot grant, and the municipal stabilization grant all remain the same. And one of the other differences is the pilot state-owned property grant and the pilot hospitals and college grant are both eliminated and replaced with a tiered pilot grant, which you see is 1,031, 1,031,375 dollars. So that is actually represents a net gain for the town of 592,081 dollars. As I said, it's not totally approved at this point, but it is new information that has been made available to us. And so, as you, as you know, this year, while at, at the end of, at the end of March, our revenue picture through the end of this fiscal year kind of was a little bit of doom and gloom. However, our tax collections on the current year grand list have really substantially picked up during the month of April, improving that position. So, um, you know, with that said, we will, you know, it, it's, we, it is looking like we are going to say, have to use some of the fund balance that we applied to this year's budget. So what we could do, you know, one, one of the options would be in next year's budget to make a reduction of the fund balance that we applied to that budget. You know, or, you know, another option would be if, you know, if the, the, you know, the grants get approved as the legislature has, has approved, I mean, has proposed at this point, we could look at, you know, going through an additional appropriations process at some point in the future to deal with, you know, the increased revenues. So I mean, you know, those are just a couple, a couple of ideas. And at the end, end of the day, anything that we, as you all know, anything we have as surplus revenues in any one fiscal year at the end of the year become part of operating results, which is, you know, what can improve the unassigned fund balance.
Thank you, Anna. Do any board members have any questions for the Finance Director on these new revised state revenue projections? Yes, Anne Santoro.
Yes, I do. Thanks, Camille. Anna, the new tiered pilot monies, do we have a sense at this point of parameters for use? Any, any indication? I know this is very new and it's coming out, but any, any information on that?
As, as to how it can be used?
Yes.
Okay, so that would, so it, it would be part of our projected revenues in our budget. Just as currently, we show a projected revenue for the state-owned property and the college and hospital pilot program. So this is just like restructuring how the state handles the pilot program.
Okay, got you. So more of a, more of a generalized funding than something specific such as ECS or something. Okay, or town aid road. Okay. It's, it's, it's kind of, yeah, it's sort of a hybrid between that stabilization grant and the pilot money maybe, but, okay, thanks, thanks.
Any other questions for the Finance Director? Okay, if there's no further questions, I would just make some comments. As, as the Finance Director indicated, you know, we do, we do have options. My preference would be to leave the budget that we approved last night intact. If we do, in fact, receive these revenues as outlined in the tiered pilot, it does bring an additional 500, it would bring an additional 592,000 dollars into the 21, 22 budget year. And we could use that simply to return the funds to the undesignedated fund balance at the end of the year, you know, which is always a goal of this very board. So that, that would be my preference. I don't know if there's anybody else that has any ideas that they would like to share at this point? Okay, so I will stop sharing the screen. Oh, Anne, did you need me to put that back up?
No.
Did you have a question?
No, I was gonna say, I, I think that's a, a good idea. I would be behind putting that money back to the unassigned fund balance. Because I know we, you know, took a lot of money out to, to, you know, during the budget deliberations last night. So I, I think that would be reasonable.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, with that, let's move on to Agenda Item 5B. It's the special appropriation for $21,800 from, for the building department from contingency. So if you recall, this was brought to us last week, and we had asked for an adjustment in, in the language of the action to be taken to, to indicate that the excess expenses, if approved, would be pulled from a contingency account. So I can take a motion on that a second, and we can open it up for discussion if there is any. Would somebody like to make the motion? Yes, Anne Chakel. Anne, we need to unmute.
This is the 21,800?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure I got the right one. All right. Move to approve a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of $21,800 from account number 0101-120-200-500, parentheses, contingency to the following expenditure accounts. 3,002, 01, 01, 104, 100, dash, 311, parentheses, admin slash clerical, and $18,800 to 0101, 104, dash, 100, dash, 212, parentheses, building official approval. Attachments are the 2021 building department proposed budget worksheet previously provided.
Thanks for the motion, Anne Chakel. Was there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Anne Santoro. Is there any further discussion on the appropriation before us? If there is no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by putting eye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if that looks unanimous, 600, motion passes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to special appropriation, $11,000 for an asbestos remediation for the Morris Building, and this also is coming from contingency. I see that we have Joe Burgon on the call. Joe, would you like to address the Board of Finance regarding this request? Joe, can you hear us? Okay, I see his.
Absolutely. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Now we can. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, Joe. We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you so much. I'm about to get my COVID shot, so I'm hitting the parking lot, so I was in high school.
May I make a suggestion?
So I came to my attention that there was asbestos, possibly asbestos in the Morris Building.
Joe, Joe, can I make a suggestion? We really don't want to interrupt you. We don't want to interrupt your COVID shot. If it pleases the Board of Finance, can I, I would like to make a recommendation to switch the order of the special appropriation, right? So Joe, hang on, we're gonna come back to you on that appropriation. Is that okay with the board?
I haven't, Camille, I haven't gone in yet. I haven't gone in yet.
Well, I think we're having difficulty, you, Joe.
Let me, let me jump in. Joe, um, if you turn your video off, first of all, it might help the, the quality or call back in on a phone number. The bottom line is, we were, we were told about an asbestos issue in the old Morris Building. The Morris Building sits next to the Bank of America on Grand Street. It's the old firehouse. When asbestos is in the tiles and in the glue, it's not a problem. But when those tiles start cracking and turning into dust as heavy equipment rolls on it, big problem. So we have exposed asbestos in an area that we need for storage, and our firefighters and other people are in and out of that building often. We stored two boats in there and other fire apparatus, our pickup truck. Bottom line is, we need to remediate it. I don't have the sheet that you have in front of you, but I know that Joe's gone ahead and gotten three quotes. I believe he's asking for, is it 13 or 14, no more than? It's a $11,000 bid, but then there was some other expenses with the testing and all that. We have done the testing in the building already and determined it needs to be done in this certain town liability. So what we're asking you to do is, is accept this, approve this, so that we can immediately get to it.
Thank you, Mark, for walking us through that. The Board of Finance does have the detailed description of the appropriation request. The lowest bid was $9,300. And the highest bid that is in our packet, I believe, was in excess of 13,000. But Joe is asking for 11,000 to cover this and any other overages that might occur. So that is the motion before us to approve up to $11,000 to abate the asbestos found in one of our governmental buildings that we use. So does anybody have any questions for the first selectman? Yes, Anne Chakel.
Hi, good evening, Mark. I was just wondering if, I was listening to the discussion with the Board of Selectmen earlier today regarding this. And you were saying, they were saying that there's no asbestos in the, in the rest of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, once they remediate this, if there's a sale of the building, will, will that cause a problem then? I'm just thinking about the value of, of the property later on, if it, if you try to sell it.
There's no discussion about selling this building. We use it extensively for storage. I mean, knocking it over and building a new one might be an option someday, but this is, um, actually kind of a historic building. The Town Hall used to be in the upstairs of the Morris Building. That's the original Town Hall. I don't know if it's ever gonna make the Historic Places list, but, um, here's the bottom line. We need that storage. We need the indoor storage. Upstairs is record storage, et cetera. We don't have any intention of selling that building. And I don't think anybody would use that building as is anyway. You know, so if the town switched directions in 20 years and wanted to sell all that property and put a proper fire station somewhere else, I don't think that that would get in the way. We are actually remediating and solving a problem that would have gotten in the way of a sale of the building that we're not removing.
And then just one further question. Once this is remediated, is there a certificate or something that we get, you know, from the company saying that it's, you know, clear and safe of asbestos?
Yes, it's, it's a good question. Yes, we do. Yeah, that, these, these companies specialize in this, and of course, their liability's on the line too. So they're, they're going through and certifying. And basically, you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna chip away all the, all the tiles that have been glued to the cement floor and then grind down the cement a little bit, say, you know, listen, I, I don't know how many inches, or, or let's say it's a quarter of an inch, but, and then steal the cement. So they are removing the asbestos from, they're not sealing the asbestos in the building. They're taking it out and then sealing the cement and giving us a new floor. That's the process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the first selectman regarding this appropriation request? Okay, if there are no further questions, would somebody like to make the motion?
I will. Oh, go ahead, Pete. You go ahead.
I'll make the motion. Move to approve a special appropriate, move to approve a special appropriation in the amount not to exceed $11,000 to be expended from account 01-01-120-200-500, parentheses, contingency for the purpose of abating asbestos in the NFD Morris Building garage.
Thanks, Peter. Do we have a second? Thanks, John Birmingham. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
It looks unanimous. Motion carries 600. Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the last appropriation request on our agenda this evening, which is $44,475. It is an NSEP grant for the Emergency Operations Center for radios and equipment. Who will be speaking to the board? Oh, I see Chief is on the line now, Chief Finkelstein. So can you walk us through the request, Chief?
Absolutely. And, and as you're aware, each and every year, we come for appropriation regarding the Nuclear Safety Fund. And what that is, is for the EPZ towns from Millstone, we're providing money from the state in order to allow us to enhance operations which directly relate to the operations of Millstone and the drills and other ready requirements we have to do to, to be an EPZ town. In that grant, and the situation we're in right now is, the state has excess money. So what they do is create pool funding. They allow a very short window for towns to, are in the EPZ zone to resubmit to them other items that weren't budgeted for in the previous, you know, grant that was provided to us. And it's very, very strict limitations to what is eligible. In this case, what we're looking to do, and actually, let me step one back for one second. One of the things we're doing in the new Public Safety Building is the EOC and training room. We are outfitting that room entirely through the use of these funds, not taxpayer dollars. So we're trying to be as, you know, as, you know, I would say, efficient as possible with those monies and, and trying to make sure that we're completely outfitting that room for the needs. We've done that with all the furniture. We've done that with the monitoring systems. What this does is allows us to now put the computer that's needed to be replaced in the EOC going to the new building. So you'll see that as part of this expenditure. The other portion are portable radios. This is a, a kind of a long-term plan. The state is providing funding, or they are going for funding on their side of nuclear safety to allow our dispatch center to have interoperability on the state radio system, which is an enormous step towards allowing us to do more, more communications on a regional basis, which I think is essential to operations. The purchase of these portable radios, which are very expensive radios, allows us to incrementally start to outfit the ability to be part of that regional communications. So when we do get to, to the point of having to move over to these type systems, it's a much less burden on the taxpayers of the Town of Eastline. So we're just trying to, to find the most initiative ways to try to, you know, get items that are needed and not burden the taxpayers. And this pool funding is an excellent opportunity for this. It was competitive funding, and, uh, you know, we, we did fairly well with what we got.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Yes, John.
Chief, I noticed there's seven radios. Now, were they assigned to certain personnel, or how does that work?
So, will, will, John, it's a great question. We'll be trying, trying to review this. Two years ago, we bought two of the radios to start into the system. What this basically does is it allows field units to communicate with other police agencies, state agencies, emergency management. So what we're gonna do is, as we're moving forward, we're gonna keep evaluating how we're gonna deploy those radios. At this point, we're unsure if they are going to be given to individuals or they will be ready-to-go radios, you know, in the EOC, should we have incidents which require that communication. So at this point, we're still trying to evaluate that because we will need significantly more radios. But again, I'm trying to do this incrementally when funds become available rather than come to, you know, the Town of Eastline for, for the full funding of that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions for the chief? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $44,475 to account number 01-70-725-224-001, parentheses, NSEP radios and related equipment to cover the cost of purchasing portable radios and related computer equipment for the EOC. Source of funds, Nuclear Safety Emergency Preparedness Grant. This requires a town meeting.
Thank you, Anne Santoro. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Rich Steele. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 It's like we have a unanimous decision. Motion carries 600. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. That was the last business item we have on our agenda this evening, which brings us to board comments. Would any board member like to this opportunity to speak on any matter before us? I, I did have one, one comment to make. When we originally established the budget schedule for this upcoming fiscal year, 2021, 2022, we went by the charter in determining the date to have the annual budget meeting, which, you know, spells out, it's the second Monday in May. And then the budget referendum is supposed to be 10 days on the, on the Thursday after the annual budget meeting. after the annual budget meeting. So the First Selectman had previously indicated to us that, that he was thinking about changing that to May 3rd for the annual budget meeting and moving the referendum, referendum up to Wednesday, the 19th. And so while we still have him on the call, I didn't get through the entire Board of Selectmen meeting. I was watching that earlier today to try to determine if that changes been made. So maybe you can update us on that, Mark. Please. Was the change?
Yeah, we needed to change the dates. The, to, to match up with the governor's executive orders, which, you know, changed at the last minute, to allow for absentee ballots, no excuse absentee ballots. And in order to allow for those no excuse absentee ballots, towns were given permission to change dates that are in their charter to allow for enough time between the town meeting and the referendum. And, you know, 10 days isn't enough time to print ballots, mail them out, and expect them to be mailed back and, and receive them all in time. So we stretched it out another week. We also had to pull that referendum day back a day, because all the governor's executive orders expire on the 20th. That is our referendum day, and it was unclear whether it's through the 20th or the first minute of the day of the 20th. And it was recommended by KAMA, who is the, the attorneys for municipalities in the, in the, in the state. The suggestion was to roll it back a day. So we did just that. What we're trying to do is accommodate for those, those people who do not want to come to a polling place on referendum day, to be allowed to do a mail-in ballot, whether they mail it back to us, or place their ballot in a, in a locked box at the Town Hall. That will be made available because of moving around at these dates. And that was the intention that was approved and endorsed last night for the Board of Selectmen.
Very good. That, that helps very much. I'm glad that you were able to, to provide those details to us. So it is official, then. The annual budget meeting will be held on Monday, May 3rd, and the referendum will be held on Wednesday, May 19th. And what are the mechanisms for those to be published? Will they be published in the newspaper? Will they go up on the Board of Finance agenda page on the website? Where, how do we intend to make that known to the public since it differs from what was previously announced?
The newspaper will pick up a story on it, I'm sure, now that we have a newspaper, newspaper reporter in town. We'll be making an announcement on the webpage. I'm sure Facebook pages throughout the world will be picking up on it as well. They pick up on everything. And on our message board in front of the Town Hall, et cetera. The town meeting, which is run by our town moderator on the 3rd, will be a live meeting, as we do need to vote on two items. We need to vote on the capital plan, and we need to vote on, I think, is it the NSEF, the rate, the, the item that you just voted on, needs to go to town meeting, because all those town meeting exemptions are expiring as well, where it used to be selectmen, finance, and by, by executive order, it automatically passes without a, without a town meeting and referendum. So there'll be two items to vote on. It will be a hybrid meeting. Those who do wish to join by Zoom, we will issue a Zoom link that week and publish it, and people will be able to go on Zoom. Our registrars will literally have to pause the meeting and go to the Zoom screen and one by one, ask people for their vote. So in other words, our registers will go up to this screen and go, Mrs. Santoro, how do you vote, yea or nay? Mr. Birmingham? And they'll have to do that twice. So we're gonna encourage people to come out live. We're allowed to have 100 people in the auditorium. We all kept a very low budget this year, and I don't suspect that we'll have many, much controversy. So I'm hopeful for a quick and easy. And of course, the budget itself moves right to referendum. So there'll be very little discussion on the, on the budget itself, as all, all our citizens and taxpayers will be able to come out and, and put their voice in on referendum day.
Okay, thank you. One, one final note to my fellow board members. We are still planning on having our public hearing on the budget on Monday, April 26th. That meeting is still on. We will present the budget to the public. I don't know if there's anybody interested in addressing the board that evening. If there are, then we will listen to those delegations, and we do have the opportunity to make any last-minute adjustments to the budget based on the input we receive. That's sort of how that works. So that will be the next time we come together. Does anybody have any additional questions for myself or the First Selectmen? Yes?
Camille, remind me, if I could, interject here, the agenda for that evening, I might not be present for it. I'm having a medical procedure that day. Don't know what my condition will be that night. Of course, we're doing it by Zoom, so more than likely I'll be there. Just, we'll see how that goes. But I don't know that I present, I might have to present the capital plan. Is that usually how the agenda goes? I forget.
Well, I do believe that the agenda, let me see if it's even, I will tell you what the, yes, I, I'm just checking that now. Yes. So the public hearing agenda for next Monday, April 26th, call the public hearing to order, pledge of allegiance, comments by the First Selectmen, comments by the Board of Ed Chair, Board of Finance presentation, you know, which, we'll, we'll keep it real simple, maybe six or seven slides. Of course, the public discussion, the board comments, and then the adjournment. Now, after that public hearing, that's when we go right to a special meeting, and we can deliberate further on the budget if we choose to, or not. And that's when we, I guess, send that to the town meeting. So the agenda does say, May 3rd at 7:00 PM. I just wanted to confirm that tonight, that that was still correct. We will discuss any possible action on the capital improvement plan. Again, that's, would be, you know, if somebody choose to spoke in favor or against that, public discussion, board comments, and adjournment. Again, so I, I, I don't remember if you were actually at our public hearing meeting last year, Mark. I, I'm not sure that you were.
I think I was, and I'm sure of it. But, but again, these are funky meetings on Zoom. So I'll have a statement prepared, and I'll try to be there. And if not, I'll have Kevin read it. But it'll be, it'll be a two-minute speech.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we don't need to prolong this. I don't think there's a whole lot of public input going on out there this year.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that. So.
Would you like any slides from the Board of Ed? Or so you said six or seven slides, or Tim can give some, just the same as Mark, just a statement of sorts?
So I actually haven't even done the presentation yet. I'll probably work on that tomorrow.
No problem. You call me, call me, let me know what you need.
If you guys are around and I need some help, I'm, thank you for the offer. I'll certainly reach out.
No problem. I'll let Tim know that, just a, a quick statement as of right now.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Okay, that's, that's the only thing that I really felt needed some clarification this evening. Any comments from the remaining board members? Yes, Peter?
Looking at my calendar, the May 10th meeting was moved to May 3rd.
Correct.
And the May, not 20th meeting was moved to May 19th.
So May 20th is the budget referendum, and that was moved to the 19th by the Board of Selectmen, I believe, at their meeting last night. Correct?
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm just looking at the calendar. There's a lot of Board of Finance indications on my calendar, and I just.
Yeah.
And then, Peter, we're also meeting this coming Monday.
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Hasn't changed. And we're not meeting Saturday, tomorrow?
We are not.
Okay.
No. You're welcome. Okay, so there's no further comments. Is there a motion, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Anne Chikala. Thanks, Rich Steele. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
I miss. Terrific. Everybody have a good night and a good weekend. We'll be on Monday.